Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Tuesday, July 5, 2016. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ask the city administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda and we have the addition to the agenda and that's item number eight under new business, resolution to consider banking and investment, the relationship with Wells Fargo Advisors. Secondly, item number one under new business would be a deletion and we would ask the Borderlands Substance Abuse Court to come to the budget review meeting on August 2. With those two changes, what is your pleasure with the agenda?
I'll move with the changes.
Motion by Councilor Droba to adopt the agenda with the changes.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the agenda? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved with the addition and the deletion. Next is the item, is the approval of the minutes of the June 20 regular city council meeting.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion on the motion of the minutes. Question?
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion is carried, minutes are approved. Thank you. We have the claims and transfers. Under transfers, we have two fund number 101, the general fund from fund number 812, the lodging tax fund, a transfer of $226.75. We have under accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls, $411,724.34. Airport commission claims of $41,176.52. And economic development authority claims of $661.50. Your pleasure with the transfer and the accounts payable claims.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to adopt the resolution approving the transfer and the payment of the claims. Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Question on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 Although yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted and the transfers and payments are approved. Thank you. Anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council on any item that's not on the agenda at this time? Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Ashley Hall, 122 Park Avenue. Councilmembers, Mayor Anderson, I think you guys know why I'm here to discuss 8th Street again. I feel like we were probably in this spot about a year ago, talking about 8th Street, keeping it open. And we've come a long way. You guys have done a lot for the rink. I don't want you to think that we're not acknowledging anything that's been done. You guys put the heating system in, you're doing the lights, you're doing the water, I mean, the wood, excuse me, the wood. Everything's been great so far, but the thing that needs to be done the most is the rink needs to be redone. And last year, if I'm not mistaken, there was money put aside for the rink to be redone. Correct?
Correct.
And I know, I watched the video on the last meeting, and I think I can speak for myself and the rest of volunteers when I say we're pretty much heartbroken that it feels like we're just back to square one. So I'm asking you to maybe open up that discussion again and consider voting and replacing all the boards. And I'm not, I know that you mentioned Cary Park and I'm not discrediting Cary Park. I know it needs to be done, but this is a totally separate issue. 8th Street is nothing like Cary Park and you're right, it won't ever be. It's a community place. I mean, this is where kids and families go. And it has nothing to do with Cary Park. So can we just take that part of the discussion out of it and leave it at 8th Street?
Thank you, Ashley. I would also like to share with the council and information that was presented to me by Tom Doris. And Councilor Jacksaw had requested this information at previous meeting and that there was 1,362 individuals who had come to Cary Park, or to 8th Street Rink and skated there, participated in activities there through the, a little more than two months of time that the rink was open. So I think 55 days of operation, they had 1,362 skaters. And so just wanted to make sure that that was responded to. To discuss the issue of 8th Street, we would need a motion to reconsider the previous action by the council. And under Roberts Rules of Order, that would take a motion by someone who had voted in the prevailing side. And so I don't know if that, such a motion is forthcoming or not.
Not hearing any motion to...
I'll move to open it.
Motion to reconsider? Motion by Councilor Kaler to reconsider the action of the city council of its June 20 meeting? Do you second that motion?
I'll second it for discussion.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Question on the motion to reconsider? Question?
Aye.
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 An although yes, so the issue of 8th Street and the rink improvements are before us.
First of all, I wasn't, I either forgot or wasn't aware that the monies had been set aside to do the work over there. And I'd be willing to discuss it if we, Cynthia and Pete and I sit on the Rec Commission and we know the issues that are before us when it comes to recreation and budget constraints and everything else. And at our last Rec Commission meeting, we discussed the fact that, you know, the boards over at Cary Park in our dire need of repair also. I'd be willing to make a move if we get commitment that we get extra money set aside to do the boards over at Cary Park because, maybe it's because I'm old and what I've seen with this community and the decline of the population and that we're an aging population and people are somewhat constrained financially to keep dishing money out in areas where maybe they don't feel that are as necessary as fixing up our streets and sidewalks and everything else. I haven't had one constituent of mine tell me that I need to move forward with fixing up boards at 8th Street versus fixing up sidewalks and streets. And I know that we, at budget time, you know, we struggle and give up a lot of things at the sacrifice of fixing up sidewalks and streets. Our tax base is declining, you know, and it's tough. And, you know, there's nine of us on the Rec Commission and we look at that and I think, I could speak for the group and Joe, if I'm wrong, as the chairman, you know, as a Rec Commission board, you know, we view Cary Park as our reindeer rink, so to speak, in International Falls, so far as that's where we like to concentrate our efforts. And there's more than the hockey boards at the hockey rink at Cary Park that need fixing. If you go over there, you can see that, you know, the pavement that goes to the ball fields and there's a lot of other things that need fixing up. And I think that, you know, my feeling personally, and I haven't had anybody tell me differently in my constituency anyway, to say that, you know, the time has come that if we're going to have, you know, a declining population and Cary Park might be the one that we would concentrate our efforts. But I'm willing to compromise if we can make sure we're going to get money to start fixing Cary Park up the way it should be.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I find it difficult to do budgeting this way. I think we need to look at the whole infrastructure budget in August and prioritize. We can't do this piecemeal and do a good job. So I concur with Councilor Briggs is that we have to take a holistic view when we're going to expend monies and understand the priorities and understand the monies available. I too am surprised that we put money aside for that. I'm not recalling that, but if we did, then how come it, what happened? I mean, if we had budgeted that for this year, is that correct?
Yeah. Public Works had put it aside for the boards, yes.
It did? Okay. I'm very concerned because this year we have to give Boise back 46,000 that we thought we had in hand due to the reevaluation of their property. We're looking at sizable give backs in the future. You know, the city administrator gave us a overview of our budget situation coming into this fall. It's very difficult. Our basic tax is 2.1 million. To raise 20,000, we have to raise everybody's taxes 1 percent. And we're going to have to raise everybody's taxes 2 percent just to pay back Boise. So, you know, maybe that's a little overly simplistic, but basically, that's the rough math on this. So I am not going to sit here and commit to anything until we take a good look at our overall finances.
Tommy, just a question for you. You know, because we're not giving up on 8th Street. I don't want anybody to think that we're giving up on it. I'm sure you're well aware of that, that we want to put the water line into the building to make it easier to flood the rink. We want to put another light in over there and everything else. My question to you is, if there's 1,300 and something, people that use the rink in those 55 days, can you give me a ballpark general rink versus hockey rink? Because I think what the discussion is right now is that people want an extra $10,000 to fix up the hockey rink. But what are the numbers in that hockey rink versus the numbers just on the general rink itself?
Out of that 1,300, my, just, I would say three quarters of, at least, are hockey players. And there is our kids that, or some of them that did not make the All-Star teams and stuff like that and they just come for recreation. And it should be a known fact that it's good to see the kids willing to get out and get away from their computers and iPads and their Xboxes or whatever. Yes, but I'd say about three quarters of them are hockey players.
Okay, thanks.
Please.
I'd like to add on what he had just said too. I would guess it was a larger amount and I volunteered on Tuesday nights. That happened to be the night that I was there every time. And it's kind of a skewed thing too. He says it's three quarters. I would guess it was three quarters and even more because the first two weeks that we were open, it took so much longer to flood the rink because the water was running down the alley. So that time period is probably accurate. That's what I saw too, about for every two or three kids that were skating on the open ice, you had six or seven kids in the ice rink. I think that that's a pretty fair number. But it also took two weeks, possibly even three, and I don't know the exact number on that. But it took considerably longer to get that area open for the kids. So we had a problem with hockey players playing on the sheet, the open sheets of ice. And so now that caused a little bit more issue with the kids with the hockey sticks and the pucks going around, the kids that are trying to learn how to skate. So I just want to add to that. And I guess as I have the floor, I'd also like to say that the, I don't have any issues with trying to get more money for Cary Park. The only piece of this that has me a little concerned is we, as a council, decided that we were going to run the water in and that makes a lot of sense and it makes it easier. But that wasn't budgeted for this year. That was something that we just came up with, that that'll make it easier for 8th Street Rink. But what they really need is to have the rink fixed. If Cary Park needs repairs, we need to get that in the budget and look at it for next year. But I don't think that there should be a correlation between what this group came to our budget and finance meetings last year when we were looking at what to do this year and put that in perspective to what Cary Park needs to do. We need to, they're separate issues. So if we could get the boards up for these guys and give them another year, we've already kind of made the decision that we're not going to have paid staff there. It's going to be volunteer again. Let's make it as easy as we possibly can on the volunteers that are there. And then secondly, let's look at what we need to do to get Cary Park up and running. Thank you.
I would just add that the work to be done at 8th Street Rink would be done by city, street and park department employees. The estimate for the posts and the boards would be about 10,000. I don't know where the price of plywood is right now, but very possibly we could end up securing some additional for Cary Park and take care of that at the same time. You know, we certainly need to hear those things from caretakers there, recreation commission and the street department employees when, at budget time. Ms. Hall?
I'm not sure if you guys have seen. They replaced the plywood because there was no, all apart when we took the plywood off.
Hey, is there a motion forthcoming for the budgeted $10,000?
I'd just say, I'm not going to motion, but I reopen it to give people an opportunity to change their mind. That does not include me. I'm not changing my mind. I still believe that it's money that should be going to other places. We've got to remember, if that's 10,000 there, what about, we have baseball fields, we have all kinds of fields and everybody that comes, and just because they come, it's going to get budgeted and then it's going to get fixed. There's all kinds of sports and this is a time we got to start making hard decisions. Just like everything else where we decide to put the money. And this is my view, I'm not putting it in boards for 8th Street Park, but last year we made tough decisions too and that was discontinuing a position. That is nothing compared, this is nothing compared to that. I mean, we're in that tough of times. So, but I just opened it up for other people wanting to change their mind. They had that opportunity too, but I'm not going to.
When you're prioritizing, our funds are going to continue. I mean, it's not going to be any easier. As Councilor Jacksaw has pointed out, we're going to continue to have to make decisions, tough decisions on where we spend monies, but we do need to keep up our parks and our streets and...
I do agree.
...all part of the committee.
Parks and streets are important and that's 10,000 dollars. It's not going to streets.
I have a point of clarification, maybe the city administrator can advise. If we, did we in fact approve, what was the number? I heard 5,500 for, we approved in council through the budget process for the boards?
10,000.
10,000.
10,000. We approved that already?
It was approved last year.
Okay. So then the funds are sitting in the budget, right?
Mayor, council, that's correct. 10,000 dollars were budgeted and I believe fund 211 for replacing the boards at 8th Street Rink. The posts and the boards because of the condition and we had talked about that. And Dennis Johnson, the previous street water commissioner, had worked on that in previous years. The public works department has been out there with a loader, tried to drop the, you know, bring the post back down and due to the frost heave and freeze thaw cycle, it brings them back up again and there's space roughly eight inches, I think is what was reported on the southeast corner that it makes it very difficult to put water in there. You've got to actually move snow up and try and create some kind of a barrier so that the water can stay inside the boards until it freezes and it's been problematic.
You know, I don't like making decisions like this and I think that we need to look at the overall budget, as I said earlier. On the other hand, looks like we did this already. So I don't know how I can stand here and say, no, I think we did improve it.
I will make, I will move to move forward with the 10,000. Only because I'm an old hockey player and my grandson uses that rink. And I feel that the group that was before us last year did a lot of hard work to bring it up to snuff so people used it last winter. And maybe if we give in this little bit to fix up that hockey rink, the numbers will increase even more and if that happens, that's a good thing, so I'm willing to move forward.
Motion by Councilor Briggs and second by Councilor Droba to approve the expenditure of 10,000 for improvements to the 8th Street Hockey Rink, including posts and boards.
I have one other question, Mr. Mayor. If we already approved this, why is this a question exactly? How is this coming up, huh?
I think just because we budget something doesn't mean it will be spent. It doesn't need to come to the city council. While it's been budgeted, the actual expenditure is still an action that is needed.
I don't approve every expended item separately though in the budget. I don't, we'd be here all day if we did that.
We do most that are in special categories.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, to answer that, another point for it is just given the amount of money, it exceeds what individual department head can approve without council authority.
Oh, okay, so that's why.
And again, just for discussion, Councilor Droba, I believe, made the point, but the council did approve replacing the light and installing the water line and we're going to use city crews to do as much of that as we can. But that was an unbudgeted item and that was approved by the council at the last meeting as well.
And the argument there was that if we eliminate hassle and time, that we actually would save operating costs and some, and make everybody's life easier. So there was a very persuasive argument to depart from normal operating procedure, which is to consider budget. So that's why. There was a good reason.
Please.
One more point. I got to believe that with our crews doing the work, it will come under 10,000 dollars. I would like to think that, you know, it would be all under that, but...
I guess I tend to be, if I approve something once, I will tend to back up what I approve. So I guess I...
For the discussion? Any question?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Although yes, there'd be four further motion and one against. The motion carries and the expenditure is approved for 8th Street Rink. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council on any item that's not on the agenda? Thank you. There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting for the audience to participate. At this time, we'll move to the public hearing. We have the second and final reading of ordinance number 16 of the fifth series to amend the Code of Ordinances, section 6-63, lodging taxes, to require in part that lodging taxes be paid on a monthly basis versus when sales tax must be paid, monthly or quarterly. Pleasure with the second and final reading of ordinance number 16 of the fifth series?
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kaler. Discussion?
Mayor, we just pointed out it is a public hearing, so we should take, offer the public an opportunity.
All right. Is anyone that wishes to speak with regard to the second and final reading of ordinance number 16 of the fifth series on the lodging tax collection? Hearing none, thank you. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
An although yes, motion is carried and the second and final reading is approved for ordinance number 16. Thank you. We'll move to new business and item number two is the first item that we will consider and that's a resolution approving application for a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license for the Elks Lodge 1599 for August 12 and 13, for their annual corn and brat feed and the all-class reunion.
I'll move. I'll second.
Motion by Councilor Kaler, second by Councilor Droba to approve the resolution. Discussion on the motion or the resolution? Question?
Aye.
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 An although yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted and the application is approved. Thank you. Item number three is to consider request to co-sponsor the Kooching Labor Assembly Labor Day picnic Monday, September 5, 2016, approved closure of 3rd Street and the use of Smokey Bear Park.
Move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Droba. Discussion on the motion or the use of the Smokey Bear Park and co-sponsoring the Labor Day picnic.
That's been quite a success every year, so thank you for doing that, Joe, for being involved with that.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 An although yes, motion is carried. Approval is given. Thank you. Item number four, would like to recognize Ted Brokaw, our street and water commissioner, for his personal professional development and level one certification through the Building Operator Certification Program. Like to call on the city administrator to share that information, if you would please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I just wanted to take this opportunity, as you can see, we received a Building Operator Certification Letter on behalf of Mr. Brokaw who had just passed that course and it's a fairly rigorous course. It's fairly time consuming. And I think the important point to make with this is that, as they pointed out in the letter, that sometimes these facilities management departments and credential personnel can show as much as $20,000 in annual savings through energy efficiency and other improvements. And Ted has really taken this to heart. He's done a good job in trying to upgrade the heating system that we have here and we're moving forward with the library as well to try and improve some efficiencies. We've also done a lot with LED lighting in the buildings and as you know, we've undertaken an effort to install LED lighting, streetlights, because it's more energy efficient, lasts longer and reduce our overall cost of operation. So I think I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank Ted for all his work and his new certification and I wanted to make sure that the council was familiar with that as well. And Mr. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, it might be good for Ted to just come up here and just briefly talk about some of the details about what this entails and what he has envisioned, so...
That wasn't my idea.
And on his way up here, you know...
Welcome to on the spot.
Ted, but Ted has gone from being our building and ground supervisor to being the new street water commissioner. So this is his first opportunity to address the council as a street water commissioner, but I think this background information will be excellent background to help us, again, improve efficiencies across all of our facilities throughout the city, so...
Before he starts here? I just like, this is an example, I think, of the dedication and to the job that Ted's going to show and the good choice he was for the job of water and street commissioner.
And on behalf of the city council, Ted, I'd like to thank you for, I know you traveled to Fergus Falls, made many, many trips there for the educational sessions and getting this certification that certainly I think is an example for all employees. this certification that certainly, I think, is an example for all employees and the investment is certainly gonna be worthwhile for the community. Some words from you, thank you.
One nice thing about it, I'd like to thank Minnesota Power, because once we finish a small project that the tuition money will be reimbursed in three different steps, by completing, by passing and by doing a energy efficiency project, which we've done several. I'm a firm believer in take care of what we have, rather than, you know, I hear the discussion about 8th Street boards, you know. We tend sometimes to let stuff get to the point where they can't be repaired, they have to be replaced. And I'm trying to head into the direction of taking better care of it so that we don't have to replace it. And that's kind of a, it's very basic, but, you know, I want to take really good care of what we have, so we can do other things, because I believe if we do take care of it, it'll go a lot longer and we can free up money to do other stuff. And I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a while since I've had homework and had to do tests, so that was, that was a big change for me. But I appreciate the opportunity and I want to encourage other city staff, continuing education is very important and I would like to give the employees the opportunity to do this, some of the same stuff, you know, you folks have let me do, because it helps, you know, I love my job and a lot of part of that is some of the education I've gotten. It's fun and I look forward to it. One thing that I'm working on right now is with all of our energy efficiency stuff, it's tough to track. So, we're in the process right now of starting to set a baseline or benchmark all of our buildings, so we can have a baseline, which, you know, your baseline is your energy cost is not affected by weather. So when you do change LED lighting and that type of stuff, you can see, you'll be able to see the payback and the benefit of it and that's, I plan on doing that with all city buildings here shortly, so, thank you very much.
Thank you and congratulations on securing that certification.
I know that was heartfelt.
I did text him to make sure he's gonna be here.
Item number five, under new business, appointment of a chief of police. I'd like to welcome Sheriff Perrin Hedlund, Chief Deputy John Fromke and County Attorney Jeff Nagloski for being here this evening. I'd first like to outline for the councils and citizens the process that was followed to come to this appointment. Upon the retirement announcement by Chief Mike Musich, I sent a letter to the International Falls Police Civil Service Commission members, Mr. Tim Eversen, Mr. Dave Peterson and Mr. Marty Cody, to begin the process to fill the forthcoming vacancy. The commissioners advertised the position and six officers made application. The civil service commissioners secured the assistance of Chief Manner of the City of Chisholm. They interviewed all six applicants, choosing the top three that scored the highest in the process and they recommended the three to the mayor for appointment pursuant to the Minnesota statute and the rules of civil service and the city charter Sections 28 and 103. By having received the three names certified by the police civil service commissioners, I conducted a personal interview with each candidate through a series of 17 questions on leadership, communication, technology, training and department collaboration with other agencies. I can tell you that all three individuals are qualified and capable of being the chief. However, today we find in a number of cities in our country, police officers are under assault by the various citizens they have pledged to protect and serve. And while that's not a new challenge to the men and women in the blue uniform, it is an issue that has received plenty of attention in the media and from society. Therefore, in making this appointment is my belief that Officer Richard Maston is best suited and qualified to bring the officers in the International Falls Police Department into the future through excellent community policing. With those remarks, I place before the city council the appointment of Richard Maston as the next chief of police for the City of International Falls, effective July 23rd, 2016, and request your approval.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Kaler to approve the appointment of Mr. Richard Maston.
Second.
And second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the appointment?
I would just like to add that I believe Rick will do a fine job and also what a hard job it was for you to decide between all the candidates, who are all very qualified, being an old man and being around there a long time. By the way, the jail administrator from the sheriff's office is here too.
Further discussion on the motion to appoint? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes. Motion is carried. Appointment is approved. Thank you. And I would ask the city administrator now to conduct the oath of office for police chief at the front of the council chambers.
I, Richard Maston.
I, Richard Maston. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Minnesota and the state of Minnesota, and faithfully and to the best of my ability and faithfully and with the
I would ask the, our chief appointee, uh, it's Josh Maston. Oh, Chad Maston. Chad, Chad, I'm sorry, I'll get it. Chad to come forth and pin the chief's pins on his...
Thanks, hard. Just like the M.B. Boom, boom. Go pay that.
Congratulations. Historic occasion. Item number six, under new business, is a request to have the mayor and city council set a joint meeting on a Tuesday with the planning commission to discuss three items, to review the draft RFP to update the comprehensive plan, land use ordinance and subdivision ordinance for the city, to review the proposed ordinance to allow chickens within the city limits and to review information to be assembled by staff, review law enforcement and DNR input with regard to deer hunting within the city limits. So those three items would be on the agenda for a special meeting of the, and a joint meeting with the planning commission. What is your pleasure with that and what Tuesday would work best?
I would recommend next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, a week from today.
That would be July 12th, 12th? And at what time? Is it 5:30, 5 o'clock?
Six recommended, I thought.
4:30 again, or?
Yeah, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter.
Would you think some of the commissioners, planning commissioners could be here for that?
I'm sure they would, yeah. I'm gonna meet at 6 o'clock.
Oh, do you? Okay.
Yeah, so we...
Okay, 6 o'clock, all right.
I think there's more planning commission members than there is us, right?
Yeah.
So we should keep it at 6.
Don't meet on Tuesdays anymore.
Okay. Motion to have a joint meeting with the planning commission with regard to those three items on July the 12th at 6:00 P.M. Would be in order.
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Drobah?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Such a meeting, July the 12th at 6:00 P.M. Question on the motion?
I'm just so excited. That's all I got.
Hear no further discussion? Chair will call the question.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No vote, yes. There being four for the motion and one against, the motion carries and the joint meeting is scheduled for 6:00 P.M. on July the 12th. Thank you.
There is one thing, if I may add to this, is I see with the chicken resolution, which was close to mine. Um, you know...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Was, um, there's Duluth in there where you want International Falls, so I think it was copied from the Duluth ordinance, so just, you want to take Duluth out of there. And as I read the ordinance, I thought, if we adopt that, that'll deter many people from putting chickens in, you gotta be pretty serious about it if you're gonna build a heated house, yeah, which is maybe a good thing, but I'm getting ahead of the...
That'll be the discussion at the meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you. Move to item seven, under the agenda, and that is the planning commission recommendation to schedule a first reading and public hearing to adopt an ordinance to opt out of the new health care dwelling law to be effective September the 1st, 2016. And second, to review the related land use issues more in depth as part of the process to update to the comprehensive plan and land use regulations. Pleasure with that recommendation.
May I, I need some clarification.
Well, I'd like to have a motion first if we're gonna...
I can't move on it unless I understand it.
You just have a question with regard to...
Yeah, I do, I just have a question.
Thank you.
Is review, the related land use relating to the opt, the health care dwelling law or is that a phrase that refers to any, the general, what does related mean there?
Straighter?
What are we talking about?
Mayor, counsel.
I thought I knew.
I don't have a clue.
I just want to be clear in my interpretation.
Just a little background information, the governor signed a law in May that allows communities to, well, actually the state law allows landowners to place mobile residential dwellings on their property as a temporary care facility while they might need that and so that's a new law, but the law also allows municipalities to opt out, provided they adopt an ordinance doing so by September 1st. And so, when this issue, because it relates to a large extent with land use issues, we brought it to the planning commission at their meeting last Tuesday and in discussion, the commission came to the conclusion that it would be best for the City of International Falls to take advantage of the opt-out provision now, so that we wouldn't allow these as temporary care facilities on their properties until we had an opportunity to look at it further. So the first part is recommending that we initiate the process, we being the city council, initiate the process to have the public hearings, it requires a first reading and a second reading to opt out of the health care dwelling law. And then also as part of their separate motion though, is they want the council to understand that they're willing to look at this some more when we get into the comprehensive planning process, to see if it maybe it makes sense for us and if it does, under what circumstances do we want to put standards in there? So they haven't totally shut the door on it, but we want to take advantage of the opt-out provision now and give the city more time when we go through the comprehensive planning process, we can get more public input as to whether or not they want to see modular homes or manufactured homes or an RV in somebody's front yard for a year on a lot that might not even have a driveway in their front yard or something. So those are some of the concerns.
Now, that sheds quite a bit of light in the meeting on what that second paragraph is there. Okay, so I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Jaxa, second by Counselor Briggs, to have the first reading and a public hearing to adopt the ordinance to opt out of the new health care dwelling law. Question on the motion or recommendation?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Discussions with other staff, we envision that this would be part of Chapter 4 of the city code, so that's the housing code and in so doing, it would just have a first and a second reading at the city council level. If for some reason the council and the city attorney, and I would be looking for his opinion on this, thought that it was better to be in the land use regulations, then it may require a public hearing on the part of the planning commission with the recommendation of the city council before it actually becomes an ordinance. In visiting with the housing inspector, which is Adam Manasa and Kelly Myers, we both, we all three thought that it would be better in the housing section, which would be Chapter 4, in which case the council could take action and the planning commission has already made their recommendation to move forward with the opt-out ordinance, so... Unless the city attorney has some reason that he thinks it has to be in the land use regulations, I suppose that the new ordinance, and there's a sample ordinance that the League of Minnesota Cities has put together, that that would be part of Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances.
I accept that, whatever you just said there is...
All right.
Follow that.
Just a question of the city attorney, do you see it appropriate in the housing code section of the city charter?
We're not giving up on having a place in the backyard to take care of grandma. If she needs help, we're just on our own regulations on it.
Right now, we are opting out of the new law taking effect and where we would have to allow it and give us some time to study it as part of the comprehensive planning process.
Someday we may decide not to allow someone to have a dwelling in the yard to take care of grandma or grandpa or ma and dad.
Well...
Right?
That's correct.
All right. That's all I needed to know.
Is there any state money with this that we get? No? Okay, well...
Just an optional mandate.
Optional mandate.
That's an oxymoron, isn't it?
I understand Counselor Kaler's concern and that was mine too. This is an aging community, many people trying to care for their aging relatives, so it's, I read the material very carefully, because it's a decision to make, really.
Mr. Mayor, I hear right, if we didn't opt out, they could just come in and do it without us having any say in it whatsoever. So, I think we're protecting ourselves and, you know, by making this move, so that we make sure that the appropriate type of building and the appropriate type of lot happens instead of just...
We don't have a rental home that has a trailer in the backyard that grandma's living in and it's a rental and all the blight issues that we've already had in the past, so...
Well, I'm willing to put up with some blight issues if it's to take care of grandma and grandpa or ma and dad, living through that.
The only thing we need... Someone that was living in a cold snow by the way of a house, so I mean, that's where we need to have that ability. All under the...
In the meantime, we're worried about all these houses and sheds in the backyards and we're talking about having, gonna have a meeting about having chicken coops in town?
Well, grandma's living and it's gonna be okay.
That's all I'm saying, if we're worried about that and we're having a meeting about chicken coops.
We want to have grandma's chicken, yeah, so...
I think we've gotten far flung here.
Point of order.
I'm gonna call the question on the motion to have the first reading and on the ordinance to opt out?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No vote, yes. Motion is carried on a vote of four, four and one against. Thank you. Item eight, and we have a resolution from Wells Fargo Advisors. It's a resolution to allow banking and investment relationship with them. It's a resolution to allow banking and investment relationship with them.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a non-corporate resolution, which is a standard form that Wells Fargo has. The city, every January adopts a resolution designating depositories of city monies, and we've included that in the back of your packet. Maybe it's every other year. This one is dated January 15. But Wells Fargo is included as one of the official depositories for city monies, and we had put a, we had priced some, I think a one-year CD with the official depositories that we have on record. Wells Fargo happen to have the highest interest rate, so we wanted to deposit monies with them. In order to do so, they, they need to have us adopt this non-corporate resolution, which authorizes the appropriate individuals to be able to sign documents and that type of thing. So we're asking the council to adopt that. The last one that was done was several years ago when we had a previous city administrator. So asking the council to adopt the non-corporate resolution to allow us to invest monies with Wells Fargo again.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Second by Councilor Drobah. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. And I would ask the city administrator, they would still be putting collateral behind the, uh, these investments that we have there, so they would be highly secured?
Yes, they have to be collateralized.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted and allow the banking and investment relationship with Wells Fargo. Thank you. Go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, Council, staff has finished reviewing the finance officer applications, and we'd like to schedule interviews here in the next week or two, and I'm suggesting that we have the HR council members, which is Counselor Jacksaw and Briggs, participate in the interviews with myself and the deputy city administrator. That's for informational purposes, if it requires council approval. As for that, no.
I move to allow the human resource members to be a part of the interview committee for the finance officer.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw, second by Councilor Briggs, to allow the members of the Human Resources Committee to participate in the interviews with, for the finance director. Question on the motion? Question?
Aye.
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 All vote yes. Motion is carried and approval is given. Thank you. Further?
Further.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we've run into a snag with regard to the purchase of the acreage in Lake of the Woods County with Megan's family. Supposed to close July 1st. One half of the funds, $56,000 to them, and then the second half would be due in January. However, as a part of the title search on this process, and they're providing a title insurance policy to us, we discovered that about nine years ago, they had placed this acreage along with significant other acreage that they have into the sustainable forest plan.
You're saying?
Yes. And that gives them each year, when they follow certain criteria, they get payments for that acreage. And oddity of that law prohibits property from being both in the sustainable forest and in a conservation easement. There was movement, and there was actually a bill in the legislature this past session to change that aspect of the law, because the conservation easement in, in most instances is more restrictive than the sustainable forest, so it's really a good thing. They should work together and be hand in hand. You'd think that they would be encouraging that. And in committee, everybody was in favor of that, but unfortunately, it got attached to the tax bill, and the tax bill didn't get passed. So absent a special session by the governor and action being taken on the tax bill, which includes this law, proposed law, would be prohibited. That's where we're at. I, I checked with several individuals with the state, both in the revenue department and with the DNR today, and, you know, Jim had been given some different information previously from what, from what I discovered. So it's basically on hold. And looking, Jim's under the impression that MOPUS has properties that are in both, but he doesn't know how that occurred or, or if in fact it's true. So he's out exploring other options so that we can continue to move forward, but, but right now, we're facing another impediment in our effort to acquire more wetlands credits. We'll report back hopefully positive.
Does this defeat the sale entirely, or what?
Yes, I mean, no, we're not. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't give us the, the title, you know, it's an impediment on the title.
We have to go back and renegotiate and sign a new contract and everything?
Well, we don't, I mean, the only reason we want the property is to get the wetland credit.
Right.
So if we can't put it in the conservation easement, we don't want it.
What I'm getting at is if the legislature did come through with the change, then we'd have to start from scratch. We can't just put this up.
No, I don't think, I don't think we have to start from scratch. Again, assuming that, and again, with every law that passed, they have an effective date. You know, if we have a special session in July, and there's something passed, and we have effective date of August 1st this year, but I don't, you know, if, if the effective date's not gonna be till August 1st next year, you know, then we have to ask ourselves, is that, you know, do we still want to proceed or not? But if, if something happens quickly, which right now it really doesn't look like anything's gonna happen quickly, it's really gonna depend upon if there's a special session, what the effective date would be.
As the Attorney, the, I thought those agreements were in eight-year increments for the SFIA.
They're actually in ten, this, this particular one is, is a 10-year agreement, and it's, there's, there's about a year and a half left to go in it. But the other, at least the people I spoke with today thought that there, there's an opt-out process, but it takes four years. Well, that doesn't do us much good. Language of these things, you know, any subsequent buyer is, faces the same restrictions as the owner that put it into the program, so...
We'd own it, but we'd be sitting on it for at least a year and a half, not being able to put it into a conservation easement.
Exactly.
It must be a minimum of eight years that you have to tie up your property under the SFIA.
I don't know. I know that this particular one's a 10-year commitment, and there's about a year and a half left to go.
So wait to see if the legislature does something within the next year and a half, or right now, we're not in a position to, to purchase it because it's not gonna be able to meet our needs?
That's correct.
I, I don't see why it won't pass the legislature. I mean, if they ever...
I've been told that there's no opposition to this, and why it's attached to the tax bill, I have no idea.
So it's gonna happen, just...
I don't think so, but...
Yeah.
I never want to speak for the legislature, because strange things occur down there.
Thank you. Further, City Attorney? Thank you. Chief Musich?
I'm Mayor and Council. The month of June, our activity report, Sergeant Tielander and Officer Koshkic got a fingerprinting class at Ring River to the South Coast. Officers worth extra detail at the Viking Street Downs. At the last council meeting, we're involved. The homicide suspect, and traffic search warrant in June. Call for service, 405 General Call Traffic Stop 60, medical assist 39, 81, 585, and this time last year, we had 534, so...
Thank you to your officers for the parade escort yesterday in the July 4th celebration for their traffic direction and coverage in the park, and especially for their support in the emergency services. I know you had a number of calls yesterday in addition to all the activities of the holiday.
I'd like, I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank Chief Musich for his almost 30 years of service with International Falls, the South International Falls Police Force, just in case he thought he was gonna sneak out of something like that.
We've got one more meeting, it's gotta come...
I got a suggestion, in case he thought, he thought about it.
Pardon?
You're gonna miss this, Mike. Just wait.
All right, further questions? Thank you. Manasa?
Council, report for June. We had three fire department call-outs, two were city responses, one industrial fire, it was a mobile equipment fire, one smoke alarm, one rural response for a motor vehicle accident rollover, two responses by myself, just a false alarm activation and a smoke scare, and then we also did one CN train fill. Our monthly fire meeting was on the 16th, which consisted of a regular business meeting, a relief association meeting, and then we did fireworks training for the upcoming 4th of July. Our ambulance in the month of June, I believe this is the busiest month I've seen, I think this is a high number. We did 112 911s, 65 transfers for a total of 177 runs, compared to June of last year with a total of 128 runs. So we're about 50 ahead, 49 ahead.
Almost six and eight.
Yes, we've been busy. Monthly meeting and training on the 8th with a regular business meeting, and then we did, our training was ATV accidents and kind of outdoor accidents, and then we've also been running an ACLS class in-house, that's also been going very well. So our EMTs are getting a little bit of advanced cardiac life support training, and it's been going very well, kind of up in their game a little bit. I won't read through every number on the housing report. If anybody has any questions pertaining to that, I'll certainly answer them, but...
Questions for Chief Manasa. Lots of good numbers there, and thank you to the members of the fire department and ambulance departments for their work on the parade, the kitty races, and, and the fireworks went off very, very well.
Thank you.
Very, very safe and fun celebration.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Just like to point out, it's very rare people give me a bullhorn, so thank you.
I, regretfully, yes. I'll take the batteries out next time. You can run it on with it and pretend, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Krishna Broca, anything, anything further?
That's twice though.
Move to reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
Well, since ladies first, I'm a lead-in. We had our neighborly cleanup, cleanup. Brian contributed his trailer, right, trailer? Yeah. And it was very successful. Joe, I want to recognize Joe. He organized us on that site, and if it wasn't for you, I think we would have been disorganized. I really appreciate how you took charge and got it all rolling that morning at 7:00. So thank you, Joe. Committee owes you. So most of the committee members were there, I think. We had three high school students and a number of other people, and it's escaping me. I did interview everybody, so you can watch it on KCTV, but I think it was very successful, and we're looking forward to the next one, which is, which is July 30th. We'll be doing north of 11th Street in the Center Ward, and I still need to interview you, Brian.
Trailer again for that particular thing?
As a representative of Center Ward, yes, you do.
Yeah, yeah. And so it was well-controlled. Think, you know, we learned a few things, we're tweaking the process, but I think we managed it very well, don't you think, Joe?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought it was interesting that when I was dropping the trailer off, I'm watching a city dump truck go by, full to the brim with the branches and falling down trees, and I, and I unhooked, and I went around the block, and I'm looking, holy cow, there's three trees down there, there's a guy in his yard cutting up tree from the, from the storm that rolled through. So it was unfortunate that the weather didn't cooperate, or I think it would have been a better day.
It was, it was still pretty good, but yeah, the weather did impede it, although cleared up at 8:00, so...
And I'd like to put in a plug for Friends Garbage. It was great to see...
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, you know, you know, their whole family was there, you know, with their trucks and everything, and I thought that was a great community service for them to do that.
Lee, Pearson, Friends, both Michelle and Wade, and Brian Nelson, I think, did I get all the vendors?
Wayne Fuller.
Uh, and Wayne Fuller, what a prince. Yeah, he really helped us a lot with, you know, staying legal and, and compliance. So it was really an act of a whole team of people in the city. It should be proud of, yeah. I do have a few other things to add. I did review the airport audit, and I'm gonna bring it up because there was major progress on reporting, and thanks to Kyra, and I want to credit Betty as well. The two of them have overcome some of the findings from the prior year as far as tracking grants, et cetera. So congrats on that. There were a couple things there that need a little more work, and I expect to see that will happen. The one thing that I'm concerned about, and I, and I'm gonna bring it up again, I brought it up twice before, is I'd really like to understand what the operating cash is, because you have an operating budget as opposed to a grant project. And I am concerned that we end up surprised with not knowing that we have a hole like we did two years ago, so I'm just bringing it up again respectfully. I don't know how you do it, but I think it can be done. And I did have a long conversation with the auditors, and they said, according to the nationwide standard, the airport is a proprietary fund. Proprietary means business-like. However, the proceeds, the business proceeds of the airport are about 12% of the total operating budget. So I don't know how well proprietary fund accounting really does serve the Airport Commission when you have so much funds tied up and, and effort tied up in grants, and $800,000 approximately tied up in running the airport itself apart from capital improvement. So I have an issue with the auditors, but, you know...
Something that Kyra and Betty can get together to, to help get you what you want?
Yeah, well, I, I think they can, you know? I think the Airport Commission has to authorize them to do it, because they're certainly not gonna take direction from me, you know? Secondly, the, I did attend a KITA meeting, and the Voyage Forward Group came and presented their proposal to partner with KITA regarding marketing of the county as a whole, and the KITA board voted in concept, in concept, to support the Voyage Forward effort. One of the objections to the process was a lack of funding. And it is true that KITA had an $82,000 loss at the end of, I think, May was the report. However, the Cold Box had a $373,000... the coal box had a three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollar profit and six hundred thousand dollars in liquid assets. So, my point here is that since I asked who that those assets belonged to, and I was told that it belonged to KETA, so my response here is to urge KETA to consider adjusting your budget to help the Voyage Forward process, given that the funds seem to be available in one of your departments, which is the coal box operations. So, and what I'm saying is that the lack of an advertising budget right now shouldn't stop a vibrant effort to move the Voyage Forward marketing effort, because there are funds in fact, ample funds in my view, but, you know, so I'm just making that comment as a city counselor who values the Voyage Forward effort. And let's, what else do I, I guess that's it.
Counsel Drowba.
First of all, as a KETA board member, I'd like to point out that it was my understanding specifically from Mr. Welcome that at this time, they weren't looking for funding at all, and I think that there was a couple other issues, and we are gonna be meeting in the very near future to kinda hammer out some of those, so I don't think funding was one of the major concerns, although it was brought up in the meeting, absolutely. Secondly, I'd like to thank all of the departments of the city, street, public works, water, police, fire chief, everybody who made the Fourth of July the celebration as it was. I'm a Facebook person, I've seen a lot of Facebook pictures from friends and family that are in other cities, and there's trash all over the city after their parades and their events. We do a heck of a bang-up job here, 'cause the place was clean, there was a little bit of manure on the streets, but you know what, we can deal with that. We did a great job as a community, and it's all of you guys that put it together, and the volunteers, the Fourth of July commission, it was something very to be proud of this last weekend. And secondly, I've talked to the mayor and I've talked to the fire chief, and I believe I'm gonna be working with the new police chief, and I think we would like to, I would like to see the city of International Falls do a September eleventh memorial, be in the fifteenth, the fifteenth anniversary of September eleventh, with the service, the respective services that we have in our community, and I'm gonna try to work something up so that we can bring it to the council at the next meeting. I think that would be very, very important for a community with the sense of patriotism that we've been seeing since the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, or Welcome Home. Besides that, I have nothing.
Thank you. Further? I would like to thank the many organizations, Rotary, VFW, ALX, all those that helped to put on the July fourth celebration, it's a great community effort and just a wonderful time, we were blessed with good weather and it turned out very, very well, so, thank you. Anything further under boards and commissions? If not, we'll go to the audience.
I'd like to speak on the KEDA situation Counsel Jackson referred to, and are you suggesting that KETA provided additional monies here as a result of the relatively liquid position that they have here for Voyage Forward?
I'm suggesting that should, it's a marketing effort that they approved in concept. If you, if you visit the Metropolitan Council website, you'll see what a regional approach to promotion can do, and so I think that, you know, Voyage Forward is looking at a regional, county-wide approach, which is new, and ultimately, it, to accomplish anything, it takes man-hours, it takes money, ultimately, there'll be an expenditure of resources required.
Takes good ideas, though.
Takes good ideas, it takes worthy ideas, but it's always in the, the devil's in the detail and in the execution, and it always takes money and resources. And I was heard at the KETA meeting that there was a nine thousand dollar budget for advertising, and there really wasn't any funds to really do anything with promotion, and I just wanted to say that, yes, if there, if KETA is the lead economic agency for our county, as that was decided now through Voyage Forward, then Voyage Forward partnership with KETA is going to need, you know, that's going to need funding at some point.
My point as counselor, I hear that with respect to economic development, going back to the basic report that was generated by the Chicago firm at a considerable amount of money, the ultimate conclusion was that there possibly should be one area, pardon me, one unit that would be carrying economic development. Instead, as a result of a length of time since that report was issued here, significantly, from what I see, there has been no change. We still have Kuchko, we still have KEDA, we still have KEDA, we have KEDA advisory board, there's a confluence of units here with apparently no significant leadership. The idea of choosing people to be directors of destiny, which I pointed out in one of the meetings, you can have a destiny forward, or you can have a destiny backward, too. So, with respect to spending additional money with something that basically hasn't produced results other than the consumption of money and the usage of a lot of time by people here who basically have never run a business in their life, or ever put up any capital to the best of my knowledge, here that are attempting to direct an economic move forward. As I indicated in the KEDA meeting here, one side of the coin is that we've put in a lot of time, we've put in a lot of effort, and we've put in a lot of money, and I said the other side of the coin, it could be a bad investment. Even Warren Buffett has indicated that he's made bad investments here because he didn't really understand here, or the goals were not clear, and I happen to go back a long, long time in listening to him, I was educated through a book by the same man that educated him, so what I'm talking about is, is it worthwhile really putting time and effort down to this one, into this form, the way that we're going about it here, recognizing one hundred percent that at the present time, there is not effective marketing going on, and perhaps it should be looked at here, but you don't hire people here that have not had results with respect of marketing. I don't know because I have not looked at the revenue or looked at the background, I know what my background is because I lived it. I also know what some other people's background are that are very successfully, one of them is Jano Pulici, he's one of the few success stories here of all of this economic development business in northern Minnesota of a mayor very major scale. I'm not saying that that's the ultimate idea to shoot for, to be able to sell something for sixty-three million dollars here using essentially tax-free money as capital, but to me thus far, it's been like bowling in the wind, and so maybe we should take, sit back and take a fresh approach here to this whole economic development thing, because recognizing that even people that are in the private sector without asking to go to the public sector at all, and the venture capital business, recognize that when they put forth venture capital, everything isn't always going to work out in that matter, the success ratio on venture capital basis is significantly less than fifty percent.
I guess with regard to KEDA and the cold weather testing, I think it's been very successful, that's why you're seeing that they do have additional monies, cash flow, and I think we have a request from one of the clients to have an additional coal box, and so I think that, you know, there's priorities, and I think if we've seen success with the coal boxes, maybe we need to continue in that direction, so I think that, you know, marketing, I think, is, can be good, but I think also can, money can evaporate pretty fast and not see any results.
The one thing about the Voyage Forward effort that's key, and we can't lose sight of, is that it's an effort to corral, harness the energy of the citizens of Koochin County to stand behind the place we live, to make it grow in the wake of a declining paper industry, and so that's the, that's the underlying energy there, and we need to respect that and engage that, because if we don't have general will up here to succeed, it's not gonna happen, it's just not gonna happen, and that is why we cannot afford to not enhance and do what we can with the Voyage Forward effort, we've got to do it.
Well, one of the significant structural problems I see is, under the KED office right now, you have a confluence of operations in there, you have Kuchko, you have KEDA, you have cold water testing, and you have a small business administration. To me, having four operations there, and there may be others that I'm not aware of, it's very difficult from an accounting standpoint just to declare here what is happening, and all of them don't have the same goal here, so the thing to do is to clean that up, so you have one thing that you're talking about, and at the present time, I don't see it, and I haven't seen it, and consequently, what you have is an element of mass confusion out there, even among people that are relatively close, and the public certainly is confused, they don't know, well, they really don't know the differences between all of these units that are out there that contain the words development, economic development, here, and it's very difficult, even for somebody that studies it here, to have a grasp of who's doing what.
Dan, your, our discussion between the two of us is boring the rest of everybody else, so we'll have to continue it outside the hall here, yeah.
Anyone else in the audience wishes to, Joe?
Okay, I've got three things to go over with you. First of all, I wanna thank you as Kooch County Labor Assembly President and Chairman of the Labor Picnic this year for your support and your partnership with that. I have a couple requests, I'd like to see if we could get them. We have the tractor pull or tractor ride that floats around the city, well, it uses the main street avenue over there. Can we get that morning or the next day, the police chief put no parking signs on both sides of Third Street? What we've had before is when it's blocked off on each end, we've still got people that park in there, and there's been several times where kids come darting between them cars to try to get on that tractor, and we're just afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. They approved that, didn't they? Yeah, to block the street off, but people park there before the street gets blocked off. Kids running between vehicles to get out to the tractor to go out for a hayride.
Sixth Avenue to Eighth Avenue, we want no parking?
Sixth Avenue, Eighth Avenue, that would be fine, we're just looking at Main Street. Block off, no parking on both sides of the street.
We have a motion by Counsel Jackson, second by Counsel Drowba, to have no parking on Third Street for the picnic on Labor Day. Question on the motion? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion's carried. Thank you.
Second, I wanted to ask you if it's possible to have the paramedics there. We had them there two years ago, haven't had them the last two years. Last year, we had quite a few bumps and scrapes and kids falling and getting hurt on the playgrounds and on the band show and stuff like that, and we wound up sending them over to the fire hall. Is it possible that we could get the paramedics there? Not on call, I understand if they gotta, they get a call, they gotta go, understand that.
We'll certainly take it up with Chief Manasa, and we can let you know.
That's a holiday payday, too, isn't it?
What about the school nurse? Or county health department nurse? I don't know, I mean, there's other...
Resources, yes. Again for the Welcome?
Yes.
Okay, appreciate that.
As chairman of the International Falls Housing and Commercial Redevelopment Committee, just wanted to give you a little more update than what she did. We had a fantastic time, super turnout, we got rid of at least a dozen truckloads of brush and stuff, we had some of our people to, I tell you, those girls from the city council from the school, went out with Mr. Pearson and actually took brush and trees that had fallen down out of people's houses out and hauled it away for them, so they were doing that as well as collecting it at the site, so that worked out pretty good. We didn't get much grass that time, Brian, we pre-fitted your trailer, we only got four bags of grass, but under the conditions, we understand that, but we did get fifty-one tires out of people's yards, so that oughta make some neighbors pretty happy, so junk ain't sitting in somebody's yard anymore. Lot of garbage that came in, again, that's free, you know, tires are three dollars, but the garbage is free, demolition is eleven dollars for a pickup load. This time, we're going to add on that we will take white goods at the site this time. White goods contains washers, dryers, refrigerators, freezers, air conditioners, computer towers, those are considered white goods, as well as they'll call in, if there's elderly or whatever that can't do it, they call in and the city will pick them up previous, but we'll take them, and they're for free, they can drop them off for free. We're also gonna take televisions this time, so we stepped up there, but that's at five bucks a TV, so, but what has happened, and the reason why we've been able to change this plan, is the county is actually billing the city, so we don't have to play around with these coupons, we thought we had to play with coupons, it's like, how do you do that? It is, is since they're billing the city, we're just gonna take cash from the people who want to manage, so they won't have to go get these coupons from anybody. That's the bill, I believe that bill came out to...
Hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So, that was, that was pretty cheap for the whole east ward, north of Center Ward, and Harley, we're hoping you're gonna be with us. What we do need, though, is on the nineteenth of July, I believe it's July nineteenth, we need help distributing flyers to the homes, you know, and what we're doing is we're going home-to-home, putting it on their doorknob, we can't put it in their mailbox, it's illegal, but we can rubber binder it to their doorknob, and we were just having, we had a little hard time in East Ward, doing that, getting enough volunteers to do that, so if folks would help us out, we're gonna meet at Cary Park, that's where the next collection is gonna be, folks will meet us there, I believe it was at nine o'clock?
Nine, yeah, nine o'clock.
On that Saturday, and we're gonna distribute the flyers out for the whole north part of the Center Ward.
Saturday, it would be, the next Saturday, the nineteenth?
The nineteenth is a Tuesday.
Oh, it is? Okay, well, that's not right then, we were figuring Saturday, Saturday, Sunday.
What would that be, sixteen then?
Must be the sixteenth.
Any help we can get from anybody, we'd really appreciate it, if you know anybody that'd be willing to help. And we thank you all for helping us with this and making us a success, and we appreciate your trailer, we're gonna really try to fill that sucker up this time. time. Hopefully we got good weather, because we will.
Thank you.
So now you know why Joe is Chair. Thank you, Joe, for giving us the full story.
Moving on to my next one, as Chairman of the Rec Commission, I commend you for the idea of fixing the A Street rink. Been trying to do that for years. I've gone through three administrations up here since I've been on that board. We discuss the problems that are happening with our parks and grounds in committee all the time. Now, if that isn't coming back to you as a full board, I apologize for that. Recently, since your administration, Bob, you've asked for the minutes. I'm hoping you folks are reading those minutes, because we include in there the things that need to be fixed in our parks. A Street is one of them that we've been plagued with for many, many years, when we were taking care of it, and we knew that that hockey rink is shot. And to keep it in its current location, you're throwing good money away. It needs to be moved away. The previous street commissioner, actually the previous two, plus the director, I believe Skulman, have said that the frost, because of the alleyway, and it being so close, keeps driving those posts up. It needs to be moved away. As long as a front-end loader goes through there plowing, as long as cars are going through there, it's going to drive the frost, it's going to push the posts. Always said this thing needs to be pushed back at least 20 feet away from the alley. When you rebuild this thing, please consider relocating it, not in the same spot, so you don't continue to have that problem, the alleyway.
There's two schools of thought there. One is that they have not been putting the posts down below the frost line, and so that's why they continue to come up. And so if we have longer posts and drive them down further, they believe that they will stay there.
Both Gary Skulman and Dennis Johnson.
I think we probably will not move it, but we'll take and try to drive the post down even further with a...
Some guy said to move it away from there, and I know that Steve Johnson, when he was City Street Commissioner...
And Ted's the street commissioner now, and I'm sure he'll do it the best way it's going to get done, and he'll know what to do.
Good point, though, we need to be aware.
Yes, Ted.
And then to discuss, two years ago, we came to the Rec, Parks and Rec, and Pete, I believe you were the chairman at that time, and discussed the A Street rink, we also talked about Cary Park. At that time, we had to close Cary Park once, because it had a hole in the fiberglass that was about the size of a watermelon. And if a child would have caught his face on that, it would have ripped his face right off. We closed it, two days later, Kelly Myers went down there and put a great big fiberglass patch on it to fix that. The rink is just about shot. You know, when we talked about it then, the city had said that they would go down there and they would reface it with plywood, with treated plywood, and stabilize it. That's never happened. Now, the doors on there are jimmy-rigged to stay on, they're shot, they're falling off, they're doing whatever they can to make this thing work. It's done, it's gone through its life cycle, and I've had, the Rec Director has gone out and gotten bids to replace that rink, and I believe the... Talked about it at the Rec Commission, I think it was like 26... Replace that rink. Talking about budgeting and replacing that one, needs to go, it needs to be fixed. Ball fields, ball fields out there need to be resurfaced, and there's dips in them, and people are tripping when they're playing softball out there. We've talked about this for a number of years. I don't know of anybody who knows how to do a ball field. I don't know if you've got to hire somebody who does that type of installation, but there's nobody up here who's been able to figure out how to fix it. The back fences are lifting, we've put rubber underneath them to try to keep the balls in, so that they don't go underneath the fence and fly away. I haven't been there this year, Brian, you've played, I don't know how things are going there this year.
Our softball, those are pretty darn good shape.
The rink, now, because the legislature, not a session, if they do call a special session, there's going to be some money for outer cities for skating rinks and upgrades to rinks. We're waiting to find out if that's going to happen, we'd like to put in a grant with them and replace the cooling system at Cary Park. Bills had bids upwards of $220,000 to replace that. The city has to do it by 2025, because of the coolant that's in it. If we can get a break through this grant, and we're hoping that they would give us at least 50% of the cost to replacement right now, we would need the city to come up with the other 50%.
$110,000.
$110,000 now, but if you wait until 2002 or 2022, when the R33 that you get right now turns to gold, because it's no longer any good, and it's going to be sold, you'll be able to still get the refrigerant up to 2025, but you're going to pay a big price. And then come 2025, when everybody's got to replace their cooling systems, now you're probably going to pay upwards of $400,000. Long and push the can down the road, or you go and get it while everybody's not doing it, because they're thinking, I'm going to do this cheaper, where you can get it.
Doesn't appear very likely that there'll be a special session, and so we'll have to wait and see what happens in the next session with regard to the Mighty Ducks monies.
The Mighty Ducks thing is, is that something that the city would want us to pursue?
Absolutely, any grant.
Us to replace the coolant, is the city...
Well, we're going to have to come up with it. Doesn't make financial sense not to.
And that's something that the Rec Commission Bill is going to have to work together with Ted, as who is actually in charge of the building, and work together on that. Do you have something?
I think we're into kind of committee planning here, so I'd suggest that we bring this to committees and...
Just bringing this up, because I just want to make sure that the whole council is aware of this, that it's just not going by the wayside. Everybody hears what we're saying. Black eye on that one, people thought we were just out to kill it and destroy it, it's not what our plan ever was, nor did we ever want to do that. So, are here, we go through the same things. Board, we talk about spending money, and I hear three city councillors saying there's no money, there's no money.
Is our first person our point to go any further?
Needs to be brought to the Budget and Planning Committee. I mean, if you have a list of things that need to be done, it would behoove the Rec Commission to bring that to the Budget and Finance Committee, as we're doing our budgeting for next year. And I think that you have a strong case for a lot of stuff, so I mean, as we get into the Budget and Finance, and we start looking at the public works, I would highly suggest the Rec Department put in requests for upgrades for whatever documented you have that you need, and prioritize what you'd like to see first and the importance of it. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Anything further to come for the council? Next meeting is Monday, July 18th at 4:30, stand adjourned. Thank you.